...of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held April 16, 2019 at 6:00 PM. If you could please have the deputy clerk take role.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Haughey?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
And Mayor Linsky?
Here. I believe the gentleman that lost his phone is at the front door. Okay, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is Brief Summary of Current Events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Any council members have anything to report this evening?
I have two items.
Please.
I have two items, both on the same day. I had a day full of children on Saturday, April 6th. My husband and I went to the EAA Young Eagles at the airport. Really great event. Nine pilots volunteered their time. Wiseman, our FBO, donated the gas. And the nine pilots took 39 children up in planes. Almost all of them, it was their first time up in a plane. And really, really neat event, but just to watch those kids get off of the airplanes, just all smiles, just giddy, just, you know, high-fiving each other and just, it was, it was awesome. They told me they're going to be having another one, so in, I think, November, October or November, so I'll let everybody know when I, hopefully ahead of time, so maybe we can get more kids out there. They also said they're working on one for adults, but I haven't confirmed it yet, so I don't want to say anything. And then that same day in the evening, I went out to the Moose Lodge and supported the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. Spaghetti dinner, wonderful spaghetti dinner, silent auction, and they raised, I don't know how much, but they raised a good amount of money. So hopefully next year we can get more people out for spaghetti dinner with the Boy Scouts.
Cool, very good. Any other council members?
I have two items as well.
Sure.
I helped welcome a new business in town. There was a ribbon cutting for Ruthie's Closet. This is a resale store, which is operated by the House of Ruth. They sell primarily baby stuff, so baby clothes, shoes, hats, some, some other baby, I don't have children, so baby equipment. Whatever you need for a baby, you can go there and find it. They also have maternity wear as well. But importantly, they're looking for volunteers and donations. And if you'd like to volunteer or donate, please contact House of Ruth so they can get fully staffed and stocked. Also, City Manager Corbin and Richard Faust and I attended a reception for the Verdi Valley Regional Economic Organization Pioneer Pitch, the Moonshot Pioneer Pitch. This was a really neat program encouraging entrepreneurship and just new business ideas in the Verdi Valley. I'm hoping that the program will return next year. It was really fun to hear about the program, hear about some of the contestants. It's modeled after the hit TV show Shark Tank, and it was neat to hear one of the organizers who had actually been on Shark Tank and her experience there as well. So really neat program, and that's all I have.
Very good. Any other council members? No, okay. I'll just run down the list here briefly. I too was at the spaghetti dinner. I'm surprised I didn't see there, but it was a great turnout.
Yes.
Great spaghetti.
Yes.
And a good cause. And I was also invited to speak to Troop 7029 last week, to the Cub Scouts. Spoke with them for about half an hour on what it's, what it's like to be a mayor and answered all their questions. It was really, it was a lot of fun. They had good questions. They were disappointed I didn't have a limousine. Or a top hat. Or a cane. So we need to work on these things.
Yes, sir.
Just make a list if you could.
Got it. We'll get you two out of the three.
I want a monocle, is what I really want. Ms. Corbin and I got to speak to the Mingus Mountain Republican Club about, mostly about strategic plan and the budget. And Councilmember Matthews was there as well to answer questions and take the heat. And ran the Mickelson, I don't say I ran it, I kind of crawled my way through the Mickelson race this last week, and I think Councilmember, or Vice Mayor, you were there as well?
Yes.
Yep. And tomorrow I'm speaking to Mingus Union sophomores, so the entire sophomore class, they want me to do my best to inspire them to do better in school, so really got to work on that. I'm excited, though, to speak to the sophomores. It's going to be great. Meals on Wheels, I'll be walking for the Meals on Wheels. I think all council's been invited to. If you want to join us, I believe that's on the 27th. Yeah, 9:00 AM on the 27th, leaves from the, from the Verdi Valley Senior Center. Burning Festival's coming up, 26th, so hopefully you all will join us for the Burning Festival, and that's all I have. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things today, actually a long list, so hopefully you'll be patient. The IT Department wanted to let us know that the Wi-Fi at the Rec Center, the Cottonwood Recreation Center, has been updated, so our guests can now sign on as guests and access the internet there. We're also hosting with the assistance of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. They'll be taking pictures of kids with Easter Bunny on the, for the 29th Annual City Cottonwood Easter Egg Hunt this Saturday, April 20th, at our Riverfront Park from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. For children ages one month, wow, that's super young, to eight years old, and the event is free to our community, so excited about that. Mayor, I'm sure that they'll even let you take a picture with Easter Bunny, so make sure you show up there with your beautiful young ladies. The Mayor's Riding Bike to School Day is April 26th, starting at the Verdi Valley Medical Center at 7:45 AM to Cottonwood Community School. This event is open to students of the Cottonwood Community School, families in the general public. Be sure to wear your helmets. The Cottonwood Police Department and the Cottonwood Fire Department will escort the ride for safety. The Verdi Valley Bicycle Company will be present to make small repairs. And a special thank you to Heather von Perrins of Yavapai County who coordinated this bicycle ride, so excited about that coming up. And we have a celebration if Roger is not in the house, but our own Cottonwood area, I'm sorry, not Roger, Bruce, sorry. I saw Roger, but I was thinking Bruce. So Bruce Morrow, our Transit Manager, was awarded the 2019 Transit Individual of the Year for his work in transit activities across the Verdi Valley and around the state. So congratulations to Bruce for using technology, which our riders can use on their tablets, smartphones, or other devices to access bus information here in Cottonwood, and being a team player throughout the neighboring transit systems to benefit all of our communities. So congratulations to Bruce. It was, it was a pretty big deal. I know that Assistant City Manager was able to go down and celebrate with him in the awards ceremony, so good news. The Library Bookmarks has committed to purchasing 10 laptops for the community public library, so thank you very much to them. It'll be used in our adult digital literacy programs, which I'll be attending, apparently, which teaches how to use current technology for adults. The Cottonwood Library is also hosting an Open Mic Night, which I will not be attending, clearly, from 6:00 to 8:00 on Friday, April 26th. Bring your music, poetry, comedy, writings, magic, and more. The event is free and open to all ages. Light refreshments will be provided. Again, in my opinion, creating opportunities for engagement here in our own community. Be sure to look at the commemorative memorial bricks in front of the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. Our own mayor and Councilmember Matthews are, were in the newspaper, working hard installing those bricks. So the first batch has been installed, but you can still buy additional engraved bricks. And then finally, the 2019 Spring Employee Volunteer Appreciation Event is this Friday at 5:30 to 8:00 over at our clubhouse, so council's invited to come over and celebrate.
Very good. Okay. Then next on the agenda is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda says-
Thank you, next Friday.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, next, the 26th.
Okay.
Yeah, not this Friday.
I would have been lonely.
Yes.
Okay, Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So we have one gentleman tonight that would like to speak to Call to the Public. If there's anyone else in the audience tonight, please fill out a form, and you're welcome to speak to us. And I would like to call it Mr. Mike Sullivan. Evening.
My name's Mike Sullivan, and I live in Cottonwood. And I was here all about a month ago talking also, and tonight I'm actually here representing quite a few of the residents that are in neighborhoods that are affected by the airport. And we wanted to see if we can get the council to put us on the agenda for a future meeting here in the near term to be able to discuss the airport expansion and landing fees, things along that line, because we, there's a large contingency of people that really feel that the airport itself, with the increased traffic there, student training going on throughout there from other airports, these would be Deer Valley, Prescott, others, are negatively impacting our neighborhoods substantially with their repetitive operations. And so what we're looking at is to see, have an opportunity to discuss, since that is, airport expansion is on the strategic plan, be able to talk about that, see what it means, and see what we can do to try and improve quality of life. Because we believe that the expansion, and any expansion there, and unless we do something about it, the quality of life will continue to go down for many of these neighborhoods. And these neighborhoods are also neighborhoods that are expanding. Give an example, the vineyards and others that will be coming in. And the opposition to us are the folks that come in, primarily the pilots, which is a small segment of the community, and who said, "We've been here 70 years." Well, the City of Cottonwood has allowed the expansion of neighborhoods around the airport for all these years, and as a result of it, now we're paying the price for it. And if we don't want to become a, a town or a city that will be going downhill because of the fact that people will be continuing to move out because of the quality of life goes down, so far downhill, we'll just start heading towards being a ghetto rather than a vibrant community that we can be. So we would like to see if you would put us on an agenda. You could let me know. I have an email address there, and we'll get this out to all the different folks that are involved in this. We do appreciate the fact that Councilman Narin was there at that event this last Saturday, and I know it was more to express what the strategic plan's all about, but that was an opportunity for the folks just to be able to say, "Hey, there's a lot of people around here that are negatively impacted, and we got to find a solution to it." So I don't know, I know you can't respond, but I don't, but anyway, you have my email address if you'd like to get in touch and if we could be put on a future agenda. Thanks for your time. Thanks to Councilman Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just checked if I could quickly respond.
Sure.
It will be coming to council. Please give me a little bit more time, but after the budget process, my guess is June, July, it'll be coming back to council. I'm working through a couple ideas or things, and I'll bring back this topic for a discussion at this level in a few months.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other folks here tonight would like to speak to the council during Call to the Public? Okay, go ahead and move on then to the approval of minutes of the special meeting of March 26, 2019, and a regular meeting of April 2, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Hulse made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes are approved. We then roll into the consent agenda. We have four items tonight on the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council member or citizen serve requests, in which case we will remove the consent agenda. The item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So item one is Ward of Contract for Professional Engineering Design Services for Evaluation and Design Plans for the Rehabilitation of Sewer Lift Station Number Four. Acceptance of a Trail, item two is Acceptance of a Trail Leasement from the Mesquite Hills Homeowners Association for the Del Monte Wash Trail. Item three is Consideration of a One-Year Renewal for the Contract with Red Rock Collision for City Vehicle Bodywork and Painting Services. And item four is a Special Event Liquor License Application Submitted by Jennifer Perry, applicant for the Verdi Valley Sanctuary for an event scheduled May 3, 4, and 5, 2019 at 633 North Fifth Street, the Muse Gallery. Is there an item that a council member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Is there an item that a member of the public would like to have pulled? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Alt House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Going to new business in, and council, if you don't mind, I'd like to pull item three and bring it up to the front of the agenda here so that we can get Mr. Jackson and Dowling out sooner before the public hearing on the water raids discussion. So item three is Consideration of Possible Approval of a Preliminary Plat for the Ridgecrest Subdivision located east of 12th Street and west of East Skyline Drive. Evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Scott Ellis with the Community Development Department. As soon as this loads, I'll have a quick PowerPoint for you. This is a request for the Ridgecrest Subdivision Preliminary Plat. It's located currently on three parcels in between 12th Street and 16th Street, the continuation of Skyline Drive in this area here. 89A is up to the north here behind the Sears, current Sears location here. Consists of, as I said, three parcels, Zoned R2. The development was originally approved in 2013 by the Planning Commission for the first phase. It was originally going to be done in phases. In 2015, the developer came in and requested design review approval for the remainder of the project as a whole, so he didn't have to keep coming back. This is for 19 buildings for 38 residential units, multifamily residential. It is zoned for permitted use in multifamily. Regardless of the subdivision, the use can move forward, so they don't have to subdivide to move forward with this development. There's some subdividing for financial purposes. This request is for 11 parcels, and the only real issue would be the roads. It was treated as more of a parking lot, so the streets, it's a private street system that will never be dedicated to the city. It's not developed to city standards, so it will be treated as a private street system. The applicant is aware of that. They don't have any issues with that. That was discussed in the original approvals of this. It comes in, as I mentioned, off East Skyline Drive here on the east side of the property. It loops around this way. It's going to be an extension of 13th, 14th, and 15th Streets, a center street in here, and then another access off of 12th Street right here. Currently, it's only developed off of East Skyline with access here, with these buildings on either side of the street being developed up around to here. The future phases will be along here, over this way and this way, and then the future access to 12th Street. The access will be gated. It's currently gated over here off of Skyline Drive. Road maintenance will be maintained by homeowners association, property owners association that they have, and they're not going to look to the city to maintain that. Again, just a general idea, the pavement currently runs up to this area here where it's developed. For the subdivision, the applicant will be required to do one of two things on finishing that, those accessways. They will have to finish the pavement of it prior to approval and recording of the final plat, or they will have to provide the city with financial assurances that it will be done. Some pictures of what it currently exists, like today, these are access off of Skyline Drive, gated access here going in and out. Comes around, goes up, continues down this street here. That's looking back down towards the entrance. That's the undeveloped area, looking at it from Skyline, where the road will come through, wrap around. That's all I have on that. The applicant is here to answer any questions. I can answer any questions as well.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Would we like to have the applicant come up or not?
Please.
Yeah, okay, if we could, please call the applicant. Mr. Jackson, good evening.
Evening. My name is Bill Jackson. I am the applicant.
Great. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Want to give us a quick rundown on?
The only thing I would add to what Scott said is that the road maintenance is addressed in our CCNRs that have been written. I don't know if they've been recorded yet. We're waiting for the final plat to be recorded, and then we'll get those recorded at the same time.
Okay.
The, the, like Scott said, there's an existing gate coming off of Skyline Drive. There's going to be a new gate off of 12th Street, and we're wanting to limit the traffic to our particular residents in there and not have drive-through traffic. I can't think, Scott summed it up pretty good. I think that's-
Just had one quick question, because I think we've all commented multiple times about what a priority housing is for this council and our community. Our packet said, I believe you've got over a year, if not two years, to submit a final plat. What's your timeframe for actually getting that final plat submitted and getting the project, you know, getting more houses actually built?
Well, I currently have the building permits in possession for the remaining nine buildings. As soon as this is approved by council, we're going to move forward immediately with getting it recorded and finished. So I'm hoping by the end of May that we'll have it recorded and finalized. That's, that's my timeframe.
That's good to hear.
So we're, we're moving forward. I'm doing the, all of these utilities right now. We're doing the water, the sewer, the power, and the gas. And as soon as those are installed, then I'm going to start with the, with the remainder nine buildings and move through those as quickly as possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. You've gone through planning and zoning. I think it's, it's worth noting that it's passed unanimously by our Planning and Zoning Commission, so I don't think we have any other questions for you. Appreciate you being here.
Mayor, council, you will see this again for final plat approval.
Okay, all right.
May I ask, when is what the time for the assembly?
That, that was what the Vice Mayor mentioned. You have up to two years to comply with the stipulations and bring back the final plat.
Okay. Well, I was, again, I was hoping to have this thing presented at the next council meeting for the final reading. Is that possible?
What is your position with regard to the stipulations? Are they all accepted by you?
I'm sorry?
Does the developer accept all of the stipulations?
There were three stipulations, and we have no issues with all of those.
Okay.
I'd just like to throw in, I'll double-check the timeline on the final plat. Final plat does not have to go to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
It can come straight to City Council. It's not like a reason, so it doesn't need first and second reading. This is just, if you approve the preliminary plat tonight, the applicant can submit the final plat that we can get on as soon as possible.
Okay.
We'll have to double-check to see if it needs a legal notice. That would be the only thing that would maybe hold it up.
Okay.
Even if it did need a legal notice and we got the submittal soon, it could probably make the second meeting in May.
Okay. So everything's rolling forward with this to get it approved?
Yes, it would be up to the applicant to get us the final plat to bring to council.
Okay.
And the Penderd Engineering, through Jesse, they are working on that currently, so it'll be ready to go.
Okay, great.
And one other comment about the paving, that is, we're not going to be able to do the paving prior to the approval of the subdivision, but as soon as, and we'll do the, we have a letter that's available from the bank for the paving to satisfy the city's recommendation there. But as soon as we're done with all of the buildings, that will be paved out before we hopefully are at the same time to receive our last certificate of occupancy, so it'll happen more quick.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Okay.
I move to approve the Ridgecrest Subdivision Preliminary Plat subject to the following stipulations. The developer will provide the city with assurances acceptable to the city attorney, community development director, and city council that the interior private street system will be completed as required and outlined in Sections 302.04, 500.01, and 500.03 of the City of Cottonwood subdivision ordinance prior to approval and recording of the final plat. Number two, the developer shall comply with all written comments, requirements, and proposed stipulations provided during staff review of the preliminary plat submittal dated February 26, 2019. Do I really need to read all three of these? Sorry, bear with me. And as may be provided in writing during subsequent reviews. And item number three, lastly, the developer shall provide evidence satisfactory to the city engineer and council that the site visibility triangle is not affected by building setbacks on corner lots prior to the approval and recording of that final plat.
Second.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Haughey?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thanks. Okay, council, let's jump back then to item one, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Direction to Staff Regarding Possible Water and Wastewater Utility Rate Increases Over the Next Five Fiscal Years.
Good evening, Council. I'm Rudy Rodri. I'm the Deputy City Manager for the City of Cottonwood, and we're here to discuss water and wastewater rate options. We've kind of broken out the presentations into two different sections, utilities, rather than the typical ones that we normally have, and we've kind of condensed it. Just wanted to go with some of the background. The last utility rates study we did was back in 2015, and then I've mentioned before, March 2006 is when they were implemented, so it's been well over three years since we, since we had a rates increase. One had also mentioned that we have, we had a committee. It only meets when we do rate studies, and they've met for quite a period of time before we actually had the work sessions we've had in the past. As part of the review that we brought the last time, we had a member of council mentioning that you wanted options for both water and wastewater, something that was a bit more plausible to, to pass, and that wouldn't put such a burden on our constituents, and I understand that, that issue. So we've worked through a couple of scenarios, both in water and wastewater, especially in wastewater, because that one has the biggest need. Just so we're clear, the wastewater facility has been running for over 30 years, 24/7, and has not, has not received a lot of care because we haven't had the, the rates that we have needed. We haven't had very many increases, and we'll go over that as part of the presentation. We're also asking council to look and kind of consider a five-year option, mainly because since we're only doing gradual rate increases rather than where we need to be, we want to assure that for the next five years with a gradual rate decrease, we will get to where we need to be. With that being said, I'll move on, first of all, to the wastewater portion of it, and then at the end, we'll go ahead and have some discussion as far as the options that are available before we get into the water. And then, just so you know, right after this, if we come to some sort of agreement on the option that we'd like to pass, we have the NOI right after this particular presentation. Starting off with our wastewater options, I, in this particular presentation, I did want to go ahead and go over a few topics, the brief history, because we have new council members on board, wanted to mention what is part of the rate calculations, and then we'll go into the different options, the projected capital improvements that we're looking forward in the next five years, and then the financial impact of several of the options. One thing that would traditionally, is not really important as a comparison, is to compare rates. However, I think that it's, it's important in a- rates, however, I think that it's important enough to us to look at what other, our neighbors are doing as far as the different rates. And what I mean by it's not important in the sense that all wastewater and water companies are different, there are many of them funded differently, and we'll talk about some of those issues, that's, it's important for us to look at what our neighbors are doing, but their structures are typically different than ours, so their rates are obviously different than ours. Brief history, the idea started back in 1987, this was an all-new collection system, prior to 87, we were totally septic-bound, which we know that that was not a good way to go, especially with the growing population that we had. We instituted a sales, a 1% sales tax back then in order to create the support for the bonding process. One of the big reasons is just the massive size of system and the cost was kind of prohibitive to try to burden just our citizens back then, so we instituted a 1% sales tax so that everyone who shopped in town would contribute to the system itself. That 1% sales tax was used not only for the construction, but it was also used for maintenance and operation, improvements, and of course, the construction itself. That particular subsidies lapsed on July 1, 2013. Just as a note, the initial rate when we first started the sewer business, it was $6.75, and there's been nine increases in 32 years, the last one, of course, was March of 2016. Wanted to go ahead and mention what's in the rate calculations, because you'll notice that something that is not there is capital improvements. There are four cost components to it, there's administrative costs, mainly those people in the office that generate the bills and receive the payments, depreciation amount, meaning basically, much like you have a car, you buy it, and within five years, we're actually just getting out of the sales lot, you've lost the value of it, but it has, all of our facilities have a certain amount of value, years that they're, they should be replaced, and that's also in the depreciation amount, maintenance and operation, just to keep the doors open, and then, of course, any debt service that we have. Capital improvements are traditionally not in the calculations, and that's mainly because if the rates are correct, the depreciation should accumulate enough, should allow us to have enough reserves in the future to be able to cover our costs. Unfortunately, with only, with only nine increases in 32 years, that has made it a little bit difficult for us, that's why we're asking for a five-year option so that we can get to where we need to be. For the most part, part of the administrative costs include, uses the number of accounts, so the debt, so the debt service, the depreciation expense and operations and maintenance costs, those actually use a fixed number of 5,000 units, gallon usage. Understand that in the City of Cottonwood, we have a static rate for all of our residents, whether it's a small home or a very large home, it's only one rate. We do not base it based on the usage as other wastewater utilities. One of the reasons that that was established originally was because we didn't own the water company and could get good rates from them, good water usage numbers, so we ended up settling for a static rate. But as far as our commercial is concerned, that one is based on, our industrial commercial are both based using the amount of water uses that they consume, so, but residential will be static. Wanted to go over some of the rate options that we're proposing. We'll go, one of them, of course, the first one we'll be looking at is what happens if we don't make any changes over the next five years? Basically, keep the $32 amount over the next five years. As you can see, we would, we'll start off in the red, almost $700,000 right off the bat. And that basically, what we end up covering is we have sufficient money to cover our operating expenses and our administrative expenses and our debt service, but we've got $173,000 left over after to cover any type of capital improvements that we have. And obviously, we're looking at about $870,000 this upcoming year, or actually for 2019, the current year, so we're already looking at figuring out ways to not spend $870,000 so that we don't end up in the red. That's no increase this year, and as you can see, it progresses every single year, we have the numbers. Now, these are all freestanding years, we're not taking into account any money that, if we have any money left over to accumulate for the following year, we keep each one of them freestanding, because if we ever get to the point where we have any cash left over, that's what we'll sock away for capital improvements for following years. That's where depreciation would traditionally come in. The other option, this is the other side of the spectrum, this is the full funding, as you may recall, we talked about this, and that one gave everyone the heebie-jeebies, including myself. This one has a sharp increase of $19.65 to get us to 51.56 where we need to be, to be able to fund capital improvements and all the projects that we need, as well as maintenance operations and administrative costs. So that's where we need to be, but we understand that this side of it, oops, where am I at? That 19.65, it doesn't work, even if we have only dollar, two-dollar increases over the next five years, it's too big of a burden right off the bat. So what we're looking at as a full funding is, we, for 2019, we're still looking at taking a bit of a deficit, but the deficits that we have for the next few years are relatively small, that's what we consider small, but by 2023, we can already start setting money aside for future costs. But we're still looking at just, and one of the reasons that we're still looking at red numbers is because of what has happened in the past where we haven't gotten to where we need to be. So we're basically behind the eight ball right off the bat, but we will, we can manage We've got a couple of other options available, we have a three-year option, means what that basically says is, we're not going to, we're going to go ahead and spread out our increases in three years and get to where we need to be in three years, meaning 2020, this will be the first increase to a 21, and then 22, and then we start with our small increases. This is the three-year program. The four-year program actually expands it one more year, so we won't be getting to where we need to be till 2023, and then we start with smaller increases. And then lastly is our option five, where basically what we've done is we've set up the rate so that it's roughly about $5.50 increase over the next five years, getting us to where we need to be in 2024. So we're actually expanding, expanding the amount of time to get where we need to be, but it makes the increase fairly level during, throughout these years, and it makes it a little bit easier for us to go ahead and manage, and it's an easier pill to swallow than $19 in one shot. Here's what the three-year option does to us, okay, we still, we still show a lot of red, and a lot of it happens to be that we are at a point where we can go ahead and it's just, all that red is being caused by all of our capital. Can we manage it? If council chooses to go to a three-year option, we will manage it. Obviously, it makes things a little bit easier for us to manage, but we will manage it. If you look at the four-year option, we also still have a lot of red, okay? And again, that's, again, that's raised, you raise the rates over the next four years, and then, of course, lastly, we're looking at the fifth-year option. This one is a little bit harder to manage for us, but nonetheless, we understand the situation we're in, and that's why we're coming to you now, is if we want to go, our preference would be that we have a commitment for the next five years and have a steady rate so that we can count on it every single year, and we can go ahead and make adjustments in any kind of capital, if we can't do one year, at least we can just push it over and ensure that we can try to get it into the following year. We do have, the plant needs a lot of rehabilitation, and we do have five lift stations that need some work, one of them obviously was, came on your agenda today, so. Wanted to go ahead and point out the amount of capital that we're looking at for 2020, we're looking at $2.5 million. Now, that doesn't mean that we'll get $2.5 million worth of work done, it's whatever cash we have, we will try to get as much of that stuff done, and if there's anything crucial or any type of issues with, that requires us to put something in place because, and we don't have the cash, then we have to go either to the general fund, or we'll be having to come to council and ask for some sort of funding mechanism so that we can go ahead and do anything that might be a little bit too large for the fund to handle. Traditionally, just so you know, in the last year, we funded, we, the general fund supported the wastewater treatment plan with over a million dollars worth of cash. But we wanted to go ahead and point out, now, these are all rough numbers, we try to do the best we possibly can, some will be a little bit higher, some will be a little bit lower, but nonetheless, we have to make some sort of projection, and again, any increase that we have, any cash we have, we'll go ahead and manage our capital as best as we can. Wanted to show the multi-year, you know, financial impact of the different funding pattern. If we don't use, we don't have to touch any of our capital, you can see what that would do, if we didn't have any funding and no capital over the next, over this period here, we would be doing relatively well. If we did full funding, we would have about $13 million at the end of this funding period, meaning this period. If we go to the three, four, or five years, obviously, you can see that, yes, it looks like man, we're handling our admin costs, our maintenance and operation costs and our debt service costs relatively well. The problem comes in is that we do have capital improvements, and as you can see, everything's red, and the best option obviously would be the five-year, the best option would be the full funding option, and of course, that one is kind of cost prohibitive for us and for our citizens. So we're looking at these three options, and of course, the one that probably fits the best is with a five-year commitment would be the five-year option, in five years, we're still going to be, have to, we may, I shouldn't say we still, we may have to use up to $4 million from somewhere in order to our capital, but we will manage it as best as we can. And I think that amount almost takes care of it. Okay, the fee increases, this basically shows the multi-year increases, what they would be. Full funding, obviously, there would be no increase, no funding. Full funding, we would have that slight, and then it levels off. Our three-year option, it's about $7 to $8 for three years. The four-year option would be $8 right off the bat, 5.55, and then, of course, the five-year option, we would try to level it off, so it's about $4.5 to $5.00 over the next five Wanted to touch base again on rate comparisons, now, mind you, I did put several notes on this particular slide because they all are kind of a little bit different. When it comes to wastewater, take for example, Camp Verde has, now they own their own wastewater system, but it also, there's a Camp Verde sanitation district over there, and they actually charge by the amount of fixtures that you have, not necessarily by the, by the volume or even by a static rate. You have, let's see, you have the wastewater provided over here, also, they collect a lot of secondary tax, that would be Payson, as you can see, look at their rate, $21.80, looks great, but they have a property tax that actually subsidizes that particular facility. Let's see, we've got some others, these also include some water issues. One of the highest in the area, in this area, is Verde Santa Fe, as you know, that they've got their own private system over in that area, but as you look at the average of all of these systems out here, all inside the corporate limits, we're looking at $48, we're at $32, so we're way down there, and we're looking to try to get to where we need to be for the future.
Can you go back to Clarkdale, is there something special in theirs? There wasn't, there's no notes, so it's just 54?
That's what they charge for their system.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
Just, Ms. Altous, that's probably because they have such a small user base.
Right, they also have property tax, but I was just curious, so.
I don't think...
I don't think they use property tax to support...
Their water.
Their water system, but yes, they have a small base, and they did take on some debt to bail that $5 million plant that they had.
It just stood out to me as higher than like Verde Santa Fe, you know, and being our closest neighbor. And then Sedona 61, what's the, oh, there's water, okay.
Can you go back to the options, a couple slides?
Sure. These are different options we have. Our recommendation, our recommendation would be to, oops, I'll get these buttons right here, is at least look at the five-year option, five-year plan at least allows us to, one, not go back every year, secondly, is at least we have something to look forward to every single year, and we can absolutely calculate rates for the following year, and any money that we have left over, we'll go ahead and roll it over for more capital improvements if we have that match.
Okay. Well, I just want to say I really appreciate having a menu of options in front of us, I think this is, when we last discussed it, it was a difficult conversation, I think, just because of the 60-some percent spike that we were looking at. And I also want to say I really appreciate projecting these out, you know, three, four, or five years, we have a plan in front of us that we can approve, I think it's important that we, excuse me, look at increasing these rates incrementally, you know, so that we're not faced with large spikes. I think it's, in order to do that, we have to project out five, five years with these, with these rate plans, so I appreciate that.
So you know, Mayor, I went and looked around to several municipalities, both large and small, out on rates, and go to find out that most of them were fairly sympathetic to us going out and trying to come in every single year, they pretty much thought I was nuts. They pretty much said, you know, you really ought to look at the five-year plan, most cities have a five-year plan out there.
And I think, looking at it, excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat or something, I think, looking at it, you know, separately, year, year after year, is why we've only had nine increases in the last 32 years on the system, that's, you know, worked extremely hard since 1987. There's a ton of maintenance up there, we know capital costs are excessive to get it back, you know, up to snuff, but we have to invest in the system. And I think it's difficult to put politicians in the position of having to raise these rates, but I think that, again, I just appreciate that we're looking at it on a five-year span.
Just a note, Mayor, that currently we have about half a million dollars in our WIFIL funds that we have not expended yet, and those will be the beginnings of starting to do some rehab work over at the Degas plant.
Great.
Right, that was the last exite bonding that we had back in 2015, and that's already calculated in the rate structure and such.
Okay.
Quick question, I've had a lot of citizens reach out to me on this issue, not a single one of them is in favor of a rate increase, but I did have one person ask me if we've explored any kind of grant options that might be out there in lieu of raising rates, because citizens just can't afford $58 at the end of five years.
Traditionally, I'll be honest with you, grants are usually for, let's say, construction, they're usually not for maintenance and operation, these numbers will probably help with our maintenance and operation, the admin costs and our debt service. We're going to try to have to trim something out, some things out, or try to be as frugal as we can to get a lot of our capital done. Grants are usually not made for maintenance and operations, but we can go ahead, certainly look into it, but there, those are kind of sparse.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, we'll be looking for grants for expansion opportunities to help for economic development, for attracting new businesses that need utilities in areas where there currently isn't none, so we look for, seriously look for those grant opportunities when they arise. I just want to point out something Rudy said, one option is not to do anything, but we will be borrowing from the general fund to operate our systems in two years. We do not have enough reserves, and the rates are not set to the level to continue to operate, so that's not even including CIP projects and failures and replacements, that's operating. I feel very confident that our wastewater system is not... That's operating. I feel very confident that our wastewater system is not overmanned. If you've been up there and seen the complexity of what they do and the work that's going on up there, Councilmember Matthews and I had an opportunity to tour the place, and I know we have some other tours coming up for some other council members. You know, they're using everything at their resource, doing everything they can in-house to fix things, to make sure that they're operating the system without any jeopardy, but doing it in the, in the cost-effective manner. The other thing I will add is that in next year's budget, there is a plan to do an audit. I have talked to several individuals about that, so we will be doing an audit of our CIP plan to make sure it is what it should be, and to make sure that it is what I think it is, which is spot-on. But while it is an option to do nothing, it, we will be budgeting general fund money to cover O and M in two years, I believe it was, in twenty-twenty-two.
So I do have a question. So could you put it in layman's, simple layman's terms? What percentage of this rate increase, all the way up to the fifty-eight, eighty-five, is just for operating costs only, and how much of it is for trying to build up capital for what we're lacking right now, and trying to do some of these capital projects and renovations and repairs that are needed?
If you're looking at the five-year option, we're barely covering our costs.
Right.
Okay. Everything else, if you look at all these other numbers up here, that just gives us a little bit more question, so we can do some of the projects that we do. At this rate, at the five-year option, we're looking to figure out ways to go ahead and kind of nickel-and-dime the system so we can go ahead and get some of these projects done. Like I said, unfortunately, we have about half a million dollars to start these projects, and that's what we're going to begin with this upcoming year.
So by jumping the rates up quicker, you're going to accumulate more capital for these projects?
Right. Right. And then, basically, that money will be coming in and going right straight into those projects. It won't be going into reserves because we need to go set those projects down.
I realize that.
And just to expand on City Manager Corbin's comment, that's, the audit is not just for the wastewater, it also includes our water system too, because we need to look at that system too.
All right. Well, I, for what it's worth, again, I appreciate the three options, well, really, four options, one being do nothing, which I don't consider an option where we stand right now. The five-year option, I don't, I don't think it's us where we need to be soon enough, and I really don't want to defer maintenance or nickel-and-dime a system that is thirty-plus years old. I think it's going to have, I think the results will be, will backfire on us, you know. I just don't think we can continue to, you know, duct tape a system that we rely on so heavily, day in, day out, twenty-four hours a day. So I'm leaning more toward the three-year option or four-year option myself. It's going to be a tough hit to take for all of us, but we, you know, we really need to seriously invest in our infrastructure to make sure that we, it will service us long into the future. And I think, again, projecting this out with a five-year plan in front of us gives the community some assurance as to what, what to expect, and allows for future planning, which is what I think we've, which, what I think we could have done better in years past as a council. So, but I'm very curious to hear what the rest of council feels.
I'll pick that up. So I'm very, very disappointed in what we've inherited here. This, a large part of this is a result of this fourteen-million-dollar wastewater treatment plant that somebody decided we needed to do, which pretty much looks like a vanity project. It should never have gone to fourteen million dollars. It completely exhausted all those reserves, and now we're asking our citizens, and I understand, we need to do it. We need, we need to do that. We shouldn't have spent so much money. We should have the capital to go up there and do whatever we want to at that wastewater treatment plant up on the hill. So I'm really not happy about this. I've looked into this in-depth. I said, we got sold a bill of goods on this thing. I'm just not thrilled with it, and I think the, I think our citizens need to know what we're dealing with and why we're raising our increases, the way we're raising them. We can't hold those people accountable. I know a lot of people on the city council previously, and some of them are sitting up here, and those for sure that are sitting up here, I know, were not given all the information they needed to make an informed decision. The whole thing is just really distasteful, really distasteful. So I know we need to do something. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for one of these things, but people need to know what's been done. I'd love to hold some of those people responsible. I know that's not likely to happen. We're looking at things to salvage that wastewater treatment plant, and I've heard some good things for the future that might be coming up, which would basically shine that thing up a lot. And even worse is, we drilled two wells at, what, a cost of one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars each?
I don't have a.
I think they're pretty close. I know the one up at the Kids Park was at least one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Then we're not even going to use. We're abandoning them. Had we drilled the one down there at Riverfront first, we might have decided not to build that plant, which would have been good. And I know some red flags came up shortly after construction started on it, that were basically pushed aside and not dealt with. That was a chance to pump the brakes on that project and maybe put an end to it. But thank you for letting me speak my piece there, so.
Is there, is there a plan that you're leaning toward?
I like the five-year option. I'm thinking about those people now whose shoulders we're trying to put that on, and I know we have to do it. I've been up to that plan. I know what needs to be done. It's just a shame that we, we built, you know, Clarkdale built a plant for five and a half million dollars, and we spent fourteen million dollars, and it just, it wasn't supposed to be near that. It just snowballed. Completely irresponsible, negligently irresponsible, and we're stuck with it. So I'm leaning towards the five-year plan.
And unfortunately, most of us, including our new city manager, are, you know, not responsible for what we, what we've inherited, what Michael's talking about. It's unfortunate. We're going to be the ones that get blamed for it. But I agree with Councilmember Matthews. The only option I will vote agree is the five-year option. I think an eight-dollar hit year one, it's just too hard on a lot of people. You know, our seniors, we have, we have a low income, and an eight-dollar hit a month, you know, it may not sound like much. It may be a cup of coffee at Starbucks for some people, but it's a lot of money to other, to other people, and I just, I can't, I can't do it.
I agree with Councilmember Matthews and Altous on, on being disappointed about what we are inheriting. But even five-sixty-five is really difficult for many of our low-income folks who live here, and again, this, this burden shouldn't have to fall to them. And with the outcry that I've heard from people this week, I don't think I could in good conscience vote for any of the plans. And that's where I am.
Okay.
I think we're beating a dead horse when we talk about the boondoggle with the treatment plant. We know it was a mistake. People who made the mistakes are no longer with the city. We need to move forward. We need to stop worrying about what happened in the past and deal with where we are today. I have one question. When I look at, with the capital improvements, which slide is that, without capital improvements, with capital improvements, slide, the, yeah, that one, Rudy. When we get to the end of the five years, it says we're still four million, three hundred thousand in rough figures in the hole. Is that correct?
Yes. That's, that's only if we do each of the, each of the capital programs that are on there. That would be, we're going to do every single capital improvement on there, on the list.
Okay.
Again, it's a plan, and of course, if we don't have the money, we will, we will one, do one of two things. We'll either find the money by trying to cut costs, go to general fund, or come to council and ask for, for an opportunity to finance anything. But that would have to be kind of the last resort.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, Councilmember Hulse, I've directed staff not to overspend. So if there's no money, they're in their good judgment, and I trust those folks. So there becomes a point where it's not worth, worth the risk because of the condition or the age of the equipment, or the readings that we're getting, or the information we receive, but I've asked them to push everything out so that we don't have to come to the general fund or otherwise to do it. So we are not, we take this responsibility, this crew, very seriously, and we're doing, living within our limits to the best of our ability, and we'll let you know if, if we get to a point where we can no longer do that. I feel like the five-year option is the best compromise we could come up with for our citizens and for the operation of the equipment. We do not have an option not to operate the system. When you start going in the general fund, you look at some issues there where it affects other services that the city provides.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm leaning more toward the five-year plan, simply because, as has already been suggested, a lot of people can't afford much, if anything. Bottom line is, if we do nothing, we're going to have a mess that's going to cost everybody a lot more than five dollars and sixty-five cents a month. And I think it's easier to budget five dollars and sixty-five cents than fifty or sixty dollars a month to pay for a mistake that we made by not moving forward and doing what improvements or repairs need to be done immediately.
Very good. Other council members?
First of all, I'd just like to say that, you know, the public should be informed, and going to Mr. Matthews' comments, because that is the feeling that I had myself with that plant. And looking back on the record, I think I voted, I was the only one to vote no on this project, and anything that was done to it in between. But that's, that's history. Now we have an issue that we have to deal with, okay? And deciding which is the best issue, not only for the operation of the, of the service, but a little easier to swallow by our constituents. I'm in favor of the five-year option.
Vice Mayor?
I think my fellow council members have summed it up. It's a tough decision to make. It's not a comfortable position to be in, but I agree. I think Councilmember Hulse summed it up nicely when he said five dollars and sixty-five cents, and, you know, small increases thereafter is a lot less expensive and easier to plan for than if we do have something that breaks, and we have to pull a lot of many stop services from other, you know, services that we provide in order to make sure that we're providing this necessary service. So I, I think the three and the four-year options are too aggressive. I think that the five-year option, because a lot of our numbers are based on estimates, I think that is a comfortable, I heard the word compromise from somebody. I think it is a comfortable compromise. Again, I don't like it, but I do feel it's absolutely necessary in order to avoid greater expense and service disruptions down the road.
Okay. Any other thoughts from council?
I had a question, though, because the motion itself is two-part. It includes the water. So are we holding, are we voting separately on wastewater and water, or are we, how are we moving forward?
The motion is, one motion for both. I broke out the presentations only to make it a little bit easier, and it breaks it up so we have, can have a discussion, especially on the wastewater side, because it is, because we have multiple options on it. That's the only reason we did it. But the motion will actually be, if you, if you go back and look at it, it actually asks you to insert option, whatever, for the wastewater beginnings and the five-year option for the same period. So if the motion actually entails both, I just broke the presentations up into two.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to make sure council's aware, this, and it would run counter to what you're trying to accomplish here with, with certainty and projecting forward. But in an extraordinary case, should something happen, this council or a future council, or should the system hit the lottery and not need this money? Either way, future councils are not bound by what you do at any time for obvious reasons. But this, whatever you approve eventually, would be in place until and unless a council does something different.
Right.
Just, just food for thought, part of, part of the, part of this, regardless of the options, one thing will, will be having to do with council, and this also is actually on the water side, but I think it's important that we mention it on the sewer side, is that at least once a year, we should come up with some sort of financial reporting, and, and we'll get, we'll get it to you, see what our status is.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. So are you looking for a motion now on the wastewater side?
No, not at, not at the moment. If we can just come to consensus, or actually, we can wait till, till go through the water, and then we can go ahead and decide. Okay?
Mayor, are you going to separate, if, I don't know if we have anybody from the public, but are you going to separate out public comment or wait till the end?
On the wastewater side, we can take public comment now if there's any folks here tonight to speak on the wastewater. Yes, sir? Mr. Jackson, you have to come up to the.
I just think it might be easier for people to remember, you know, the top, and easier for us.
Yeah, thank you.
First of all, I just wanted to make sure that there was going to be an opportunity for the public to ask questions or comment before this is voted on and approved.
Now is your opportunity, my friend.
Now is my opportunity. I just had a couple of quick questions. The first of all would be, all of the information we've heard currently is about maintenance and future capital investment projects, but we're not talking about the potential big elephant in the room, which would be the capacity of the overall plant and an expansion necessary if that comes up in the future. Because do we have any information on that? And at the same time, these, the capital investments that we're projecting to do, do we have a, I'm not privy to your packets, but do we have a list of those projected capital improvement projects that are going to be, try to be done in the next four or five years?
Yes. Yeah, and I believe Mr. Rodriguez showed the list earlier.
This is only part of the list, and that's only part of the list. That is not part, that is the list.
So you were standing over here, so I couldn't see that.
Oh, I am, I'm.
So I got a kink in my neck.
No, and if you go to the, to the, to our council agenda, it actually details all the financials, and there's, there's, there are different presentations for that. We're not covering all of them because we do eight different presentations, so we're only covering the, the rate part of it.
But what about the, the big picture with respect to plant expansion, current capacity, wherever?
Well, probably, right, I could probably speak more to that, but we're at a point where we're not looking for any additional expansion. We've still got Riverfront plant that we need to figure out how, how we're going to deal with that. That's an extra three hundred thousand gallon capacity that we're going to have to figure what to do with it. So we've got plenty of capacity at this point in time. So in the next five years, we're not looking for another plant or anything of that. We'd like to just rehab what we currently have.
To clarify, so that makes sure we're still running on the same numbers, I think the last time we heard a capacity number for the Mingus plant, it was running at sixty percent? Has that changed or increased?
It's higher.
That's, that's pretty close.
Okay.
We're on eight hundred thousand. We're at about eight hundred to nine hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's about sixty?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still there.
Mingus is a one-point-five million gallon per day plant.
Yeah.
We're running right at just about a thousand, or a million.
So we still have a large.
Right at nine hundred to a million a day is where we run. So between Mingus and Riverfront, we've got one-point-eight million gallons per day capacity, and we're barely at fifty percent between the two.
So expansion isn't something we have to consider for long. Thank you.
Does that answer all your questions, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, there was also a question about public input. This will be coming back. We have to issue, one of your motions is a notice of intent. So there'll be a public hearing next month, is my guess. I don't remember the date.
There's a schedule in your.
I think we have one in May, on the second, yes, May twenty-first. So they're about, it's on the next, the next item on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Are there any other folks here that would like to address the council on the wastewater rate, proposed rate increase? And let's roll into the water.
Just bear with me, council. You can see the mouse?
Yes. Look on the big screen.
Oh, it's on the screen next. You can see it over here for some reason.
Where it's, where it's for this.
Oh, there it is. Okay, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, the date is May twenty-first, so the second regular council session, the third meeting of May, for an effective third meeting of May, for an effective date of July 1st.
And that'll be the hearing, the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
May 21st.
Okay, Mayor, council. For this particular one, we're not gonna go, since it's more recent, we're, I'm not going through the, any type of history on it. I think we'll go right straight into the water price financials, and then we'll go look at the rate projections, five-year rate, and then we're gonna be looking and asking any questions. We'll also have, I believe it does have a comparison chart on there, too. As you can see, this is our current financials and, there you go, I'll go it this way. This is our five-year rate projection for inside the corporate limits. As you know, we have a differential rate between inside and outside the corporate limits. We're, we're not looking for any increase for the first year, for 2020. We don't actually see, ask for an increase till 2021. So we're, we're still talking, even though we haven't had an increase in three years, we're looking to add another year before we actually do make any increases. Basically, we will be going up 52 cents for the base rate in 2021. And then after that, pretty much everything else, pretty much stays the same. The rates for, whoops, I keep forgetting the buttons. The rates do recrease slightly from zero, from one, from 1,000 to 5,000 gallons will be up 6 cents for that, for every 1,000. And as you can see, 9 cents for every, every 1,000, 5, 5 to 10,000, and 13 cents. And as you know, the more you use, the bigger the, the rate increase. We do that in order to conserve water. Our outside rates go up just a little bit also. The, the difference is not as minimal. Here we go. Back up over here. We go from 33, 33.8, $33.80 to $34.48 as a base charge. So the increase is only, what, 68 cents as a, from the base rate? And then, as you can see, the, the volume rates also go up 8 cents for the first 5,000. Then, then just from there, it's 12 cents for that, and then it just keeps going up incrementally, all based on, on the more usage, the higher rates you pay. We are not making any, any, any estimated changes for our water resource development fees. Those remain static. And as far as our connection fees, they go up to, they would go up to 45 and then a dollar every single year, and that mirrors our inside rates. And one of the reasons those rates are exactly the same, both inside and outside, is these are the connection fees. You go out there and connect it, and you're done. So we, we, we had the committee say, just leave it at one rate, same for both, because you only go out there once. The difference, of course, is the, is the, that there are more, there's reasons why we'd go ahead and have a differential rate. This is what we're looking for, our rate structure. We're 2019, that's our current structure. For 2020, again, we're remaining the same. For 2021, we're still well over a year out before we actually do any increases. We're also asking, obviously, for a five-year rate program, so we don't have to come in over here every single year. We have a quick breakdown on our usage, inside and outside. As you can see, for an average user, it's roughly 7,500, probably a little bit higher than that. But as you can see, the rates would add 20, 2021, two years from now, basically, that rate would only go up about a dollar for 7,500 gallons. And outside the corporate limits, it'd be a dollar a third of the corporate limits. Obviously, you may some, you do understand we're about 30% different. I wanna go back a little bit. I think I may have messed up the slides a little bit. Basically, what our rates will do for us, the option of not increasing it, we're financially, we're in really good shape. 2019, we've got a lot of capital that we're trying to work on. But nonetheless, over the next few years, it kinda trends down. Our system has been, is in relatively good shape, considering what other systems are like. We've spent a lot of money, we, we first purchased, purchased the companies, we actually borrowed extra money to do a lot of improvements. We do have a lot of improvements in, but we still have issues that come up, whether it's a pipe break during the winter time or otherwise. But nonetheless, we're kind of, as you can see, we're looking to trend down, trend down over the next few years, roughly a million dollars or less in, in capital improvement. So the system is, is operating relatively well, and we do have cash on hand. So that's, this system doesn't need the rate increase as much, so that's why we're prolonging it out another couple, another couple of years.
I've got one. The, the majority of our residences, are they on 5 eighths, one inch? I'm assuming those are residence, residential, and then as they go up from one inch, 5 eighths.
5 eighths, 3 quarters.
And they're both at the same rate, both 5 eighths and a 3 quarter are at the same rate.
Okay, so can I assume that one inch should be 3 quarter, then?
I can't, I can't really see. The light on, so I can't, I can't see.
And those are residential?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The, the, the standard line is about 3 quarters, I believe, and where they use a 3, we also have a 5 eighths line in there, so.
5 eighths, 3 quarters, that's interchangeable. It's actually one inch.
But, but the rates aren't the same.
No, he's saying they should have-
No, that, that's an inch line.
They should have slash 3 quarters.
Okay, okay. So then, this one inch line is not residential?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's our main service line, that's why.
Okay, so then the 5 eighths is?
That's the meter size.
Okay.
So what do residents pay?
They pay the 5 eighths rate.
The 5 eighths?
Right.
Okay. So who pays the one-inch rate?
Residents outside, they have larger homes that actually have a one-inch.
Okay, so there are some residents, but not the majority that have a one-inch. Okay.
And in the city, because of our fire code, we have fire sprinklers.
Mr. Biggs, if you could come just a little bit closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
We have fire sprinkler, we're in the city. Those residents with new homes that have fire sprinklers, they have a one-inch meter, but they're charged the 5 eighths rate.
Okay. So I have sprinklers.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm paying the higher rate?
No.
Oh, okay.
You're charged, though.
Okay. Just, I'm just trying to clarify in my mind. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Rodriguez? Or others? Members of the public here this evening, how would you like to come up and speak to us?
I had a, Bill Jackson again. I had a couple of questions that I forgot to ask about the wastewater plan.
Sure.
One of them was, have, has the city considered eliminating the static rate for the sewer fees? If they did a, now that the city owns the water companies, if they tied the sewer rates to the water, you see some of these households, especially low-income housing households, would use less water and therefore pay a lower rate. I was wondering if you've done any projections to see what the, the, your collection would be on that.
No. Currently, we, we are, we're still, we're still using the, the old static rate model. I haven't done any projections on it.
So then my other question was, is with respect to the, the overall rate structure increase, have, have you included the capacity fees that were recently implemented in your projections of cost and analysis?
Let me see if they're on here. I don't think, I don't think they're right on here.
Thank you.
No, they're not. They're all down here. We, we have segregated from this because that, that money we ended up using for the cap, all the capacity, should fit this way, not there. The capacity fees were all, were all on the premise of the capital improvements that we currently have and the depreciation of it. That's how we calculated our, our cap, capacity fee. Capacity fees, we don't plan to use them for, for subsidizing the rates or anything else. That money will go to continuing to improve the facility. That, that's what it was originally brought to council for. That's how it was originally calculated, based on the, the facility that we currently have.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jackson?
So far, yes.
Okay. All right. Thoughts, council, on the proposed water rate increase?
I, I, I don't think they're, I think it's, it's so small that, you know.
And are you all comfortable with, with projecting this out five years?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Especially since Mr. Horton explained that, you know, future council can bring it back and, and, you know, we're not tying future council.
Right.
We're just trying to, to plan out.
Right. And again, I just can't stress how important that is, and I appreciate council supporting, projecting these rates out five years, because I think it, in the past, has caused us to not, you know, incrementally increase these rates, which puts us all in kind of a bind.
I think it allows people to plan.
Exactly.
Too, you know, and, and maybe we're taking the burden off people who run for, for council in another year or so, when, when it's, it's time, you know? They may not have to, you know, get the hate mail that, that we're gonna get.
And I agree. Right now, the water numbers just don't support an increase, but I think that this plan is trying to be long-term thinking and long-term strategy, so that future councils are not in the same position that we are in with regard to the wastewater. I think the numbers, based on the projects, make sense. I think they're conservative. And, and I'm in favor, even though I, I'm generally, you know, against any kind of a rate increase, I think this is just smarter, long-term planning than, than we had in the prior years.
And they look really good next to the wastewater increases.
That's a good point.
Any other council members want to share?
By planning ahead, we're, as Vice Mayor Henry said, we're gonna eliminate the question of, do we raise the water rates $50 a month five years down the road because we failed to plan ahead? Which is where we're at right now with the sewer. So I like the idea of being proactive, putting some money aside upfront and being able to maintain the equipment and the system on an ongoing basis and not have equipment sitting, needing repairs and not making them because we don't have the money.
Any other council members? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, just a procedural question. I think you'll see in the, in the proposed motion, staff anticipated that the council would, would understand the recommendation, the, the single recommendation with respect to the water rates. And then we left a blank for you to insert an option. You'll take legal action, and the next item coming up right away will be adoption of the notice of intent. That will then trigger the, the statutory periods, the notice of public hearing, and then it will all come back.
Very good. Okay, so you are now looking for an option, or a, a motion with the option. Okay.
Shall I wield the lightning rod?
If you'd, if you'd like.
Okay, so I move to approve the five-year option for wastewater rates beginning July 1st, 2019, and the five-year water rate option for the same period as proposed by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have, and that's option wastewater rate option five, correct? Just to be clear.
The five-year.
Yeah, okay. So Councilmember Matthews made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howery?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
No.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, let's move on then to discussing consideration of possible adoption of a notice of intent to increase water and wastewater utility rates.
Okay, Mayor, council, now that we have, we've come to consensus on, on the water and wastewater rates, next, the next move is to go ahead and approve the notice of intent. This will get out, get published. I did put in the, the statute ARS 9-511, which basically outlines our procedures in there. It shows that we will, we had our council meeting today, our, we will have a notice of intent published in our paper, our local paper, and, and all of our social media by November 1st, and we'll hold our first and only public hearing on May 21st, and we'll make sure that that's on our social media and our website. With that being said, our projected start date would be July 1st of 2019. As you can see in the notice of intent, there is two blank spots. It says water and then wastewater rates. It left, it left blank intentionally, pending what we would have done. We would do as, on the last, the previous agenda item. Those will be filled in, showing the, the five-year option that council has just asked to move forward with. They have the water rates that were presented at the previous item.
Very good. So again, that'd be May 21st, be the public hearing on the wastewater rates. Appreciate the paper publishing notice of this meeting today, and I'm assuming they will as well for the public hearing on the wastewater and water rate increases. We're all available by email, or you find us in the grocery store.
Not me.
And, no, we, we do, we, we take this seriously. It's not an easy position for us to be in. We understand any rate increase will negatively impact a large portion of our community. So we, we welcome your comments and appreciate everyone taking the time out of their day to, to work through this process with us. So thank you.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt the proposed notice of intent to increase rates, fees, and charges for the City of Cottonwood Municipal Water and Wastewater Utilities over a five-year period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2024, in accordance with the rate schedules previously approved at this meeting, to publish the notice of intent as required by ARS Section 9-511.01, Section A2, oh, Point A2, and to hold a public hearing on the proposed new rates, fees, and charges at the regular council meeting at the City Council Chamber starting at 6:00 PM on May 21st, 2019.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Althaus seconded it. Could please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howery?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
No.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Okay, next and last on the agenda is consideration of a cooperative use of contract to purchase Recreation Center software. Evening, Ms. Roll.
Evening. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for hanging in there tonight. I also want to thank Jeff and Kirsten with Procurement and Finance for hanging in there as well. I may need to phone a friend during this process. Also, special thanks to Ron and Rudy, their attention to detail. This is the second time we've brought it through the process, and they kicked it back last time to make sure we crossed all of our Ts and dotted our Is. The reason we're looking at changing up our software system is to automate the process, to streamline it, get more things online, help with our cost recovery, and also our customer interface. There's also some cost savings. You'll notice that we're doing a cooperative use agreement. The reason we're doing that is so we can tag on to a larger city's agreement. What that does for us is it'll, it cuts down our rate. We were being charged prior, previous to this, around a 1.99 rate, percent rate, transaction fee. By partnering on the Oro Valley Agreement, we get it down to 1.5. That's, that's fantastic. And that's a thanks to Jeff Cook and his work. It says RecCenter software, but in reality, what it is, it's a department-wide software program platform. Our department oversees the RecCenter, Clubhouse, Youth Center, 116 acres of parkland, trails, sports facilities, aquatic centers, and programming. The system will see a little over $800,000 in revenue in a year, and our general operating budget is around 2.6 to $3 million for the department. So the system will allow us to manage all that a little more cost-effectively and be able to get our services online to the public. Any questions?
Questions from council?
I think it looks great. Thank you. Great numbers are, are really encouraging, cost savings and efficiency. So thank you for your work, all of you, in this project.
And what can consumers of this expect?
You know, one of the really neat features of this, as I was going through all the videos, right now, if we want to go through a special process, for example, Thunder Valley Rallying, we wanted to have the consumer be able to print a ticket with a barcode and then have a scanner. then have a scanner, we'd have to go to a third-party printing ticketing company that would take an additional percentage. Through this software package, that's already built in. We can do that. On the other end, uh, we like, what we're shooting for is a sniper process for the end user, a very pinpointed, point click, get to where you want to go. And we're hoping through this, this package, and the fact that we have Civic Plus, we can make that interface happen.
Very good. Okay. Easy.
I've been reading the, especially the long ones. I'm taking a pass on this. I got you.
I move to approve the cooperative use of the Town of Oro Valley Master Services Agreement with Civic Rec to provide the City of Cottonwood with community engagement and government management platforms and related services, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Second.